First is a special presentation, Finance Department Award, and I'm gonna recognize Darren to make comments.
Our city's Finance Department has earned the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for an eighth consecutive year, and I would like for our Finance Director Jake Weevil to come up and say a few words about this very prestigious award.
Jake, bring your Finance Officers with you. Anybody from Finance Department, bring them up with you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Certificate for Excellence of Achievement in Financial Reporting Program, it was established in 1945 to encourage governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of financial reporting. It is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Receiving the award demonstrates a constructive spirit of full disclosure that clearly communicates the city's financial story. Since we have received the award eight years in a row, it might be easy to assume this as routine or guaranteed, but that is far from the truth. To be eligible to submit for the award, the city must first file an annual comprehensive financial statement report, or commonly known as the ACFR, which a couple of years ago was just called the CAFR. It contains more background information about the city in addition to our regular financial statements, such as the types of services that we provide, information on our component units like the ABC Board, the city's long-term financial planning and major initiatives such as our strategic plan, and 10-year statistical comparison information such as historical tax rates, financial trends, legal debt ratios, top employers, et cetera. That report is then examined by a special review committee assembled by the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization. Our report is analyzed across 19 categories that range from report formatting to note disclosures. The checklist that they use is 48 pages long and written in very tiny print. Each year that we receive this award is only relevant to the fiscal year of the last report that the city filed, so in this case it's for fiscal year 2024. First, I'd like to sincerely thank my finance staff for their hard work and dedication. Everything we do relating to our policies, our procedures, they are all designed to ensure we keep receiving the award each year, which is again the highest form of recognition the city could receive for financial reporting. I would also like to extend my gratitude to the rest of the city, including all departments, administration, and council. We could not do what we do without your partnerships and support. Thank you.
Jake, thank you, but I'm gonna give any of the rest of them a opportunity to speak if they would like to. Then I will say thank you to all of you and all of your department for what you do. If you will, get the plaque and turn around and let David get a picture with all of them.
If I sit right here, I can get.
So those are the people that handle our money?
Part of the people that handle our money.
A small percentage.
Yes.
God well done.
Thank you, all of you. Moving on to approval amendments, Council, I ask for approval of the October 21st, 2025 closed session for Economic Development, October 21st, 2025 closed session for consult with the attorney, October 28th, 2025 special work session, November 3rd, 2025 regular session, November 3rd, 2025 closed session for Economic Development, November 3rd, 2025 consult with the attorney. I have an amendment to the October 28th special work session, and it's on the last page. It talks about District 4 vacancy. Mayor Michael added the item to the agenda to discuss the vacant City Council position. Mayor Michael reminded council that each had received all questionnaire responses from the candidates and heard presentations. Council was reminded that plans were to select a replacement at the November 3rd, 2025 City Council meeting, unless council needed further information. The mayor asked if there was any discussion from council about the process or their thoughts on the candidates. Council discussed what they would like to see from a candidate. No changes were made to the anticipated process of selecting a candidate at the November 3rd meeting. Council, I'll entertain a motion with those changes and all the other minutes.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, I'll give you a copy of this. Next, we're gonna move to a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the abandonment of Jeffrey Street. First, I'm gonna ask Darren, who you gonna have?
I'm gonna have Lindsey Alman, our Economic Development Director, present the application for the abandonment of this public right-of-way.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Members of City Council. This evening, we are presenting a request submitted by AOC 202 LLC, the adjacent property owner seeking the abandonment of a city right-of-way along Jeffrey Street. The area of consideration consists of approximately 16,400 square feet. I'm gonna pull it up. Not that one.
You looking for the plaque? Go down to the next page, number eight.
Thank you. Need a better glasses, I guess. In accordance with North Carolina general statute, the city is required to hold a public hearing prior to acting on any right-of-way closure. Public notice has been duly provided, and all required procedural steps have been completed. Okay. As part of our internal review process, staff circulated the request to all relevant city departments and utility partners for comment. No operational concerns or objections were raised. The right-of-way segment is currently unused by the public, unimproved, and does not serve a public transportation function. Based on our long-range planning documents, there's also no anticipated future need for this corridor for connectivity or infrastructure purposes. Any utility infrastructure present within the right-of-way, the city will retain the necessary easements to ensure continued access, maintenance, and service delivery. If council elects to approve the abandonment, the right-of-way will revert to the adjoining property owner in accordance with the underlying deed descriptions, which are here. You will see the property owner now owns both sides of Jeffrey Street as well as the other portion in the back. At this time, staff finds no public purpose served by retaining this segment of right-of-way and recommends that council consider Approval Ordinance 2542. Mayor, this concludes the presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Birch, when we do this easement, can it include a statement about if they build something back and have asphalt over the top of it, we would only be required for patching that asphalt rather than the entire parking lot?
Okay, so it looked like the clerk has had discussion about the paving with the owners, and they are under the understanding that we will not be doing any additional paving or anything like that. But most of that stuff comes from mutual agreement, so if that is already agreed upon with the owners, then we're fine to proceed.
So they're in agreement. If we have to tear out a water line or sewer line, we would patch back, would be all we would do.
Right. I would also recommend, if that is council's wish, if we could amend the ordinance when you do your approval, to put that some kind of qualification in there just so it runs with the land in the event that it's sold.
Thank you.
Just one last, your last comment, so it does what?
Run with the land, just in case it's sold. These ordinances have to be filed at the Register of Deeds.
Right.
If we want to keep a good track of it, that would be the best place to put that qualification.
I wanted you to repeat that. I thought that's what I heard, and I hope that's what I heard, but I wanted you to repeat that, because this is, goes with the land.
Right.
Thank you.
Council, have any questions for Ms. Alman? Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have anything that they wish to say? Okay, thank you. I'll move on then to the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone that comes up to speak will have three minutes to speak, and the first name I have is Tammy Earhart.
How are y'all? My name is Tammy Earhart. I have the property, if you, can you move this for me? What I was sent, of course, I had a sign on my yard that this was gonna happen, the re-annexation or rezoning. So I just came up to clarify a few things, because there's been three things that's happened on my property. If you look at this road, there, you kinda see that it looks like there's a road going through the property. That is actually a utility easement. It is not a road that continues on from their property to my property. So I had a call from the North Carolina Department of Transportation saying that they wanted me to agree to cut out. There is a median in the road on 52 in front of my property, that they wanted to cut it out, because they want to come through my property to enter into and be able to make a left-hand turn. I told North Carolina DOT I didn't want that to happen. There is no right-of-way on my deed, or as you can see here, I just want the owner to be aware that there's no right-of-way from my property to their property. Also, the second thing that's happened is there was a lot of site work down on this property in the past couple of months. All the dirt came across my property in the dump trucks. There were three big concrete barriers along the property line right there where the road comes down off and comes into Highway 52. All that dirt came across my property, and I know this isn't your issue. It just looks like in the drawing that was sent to me from y'all for this tonight, it's a black line. It looks like Jeffrey Street comes on through my property, and it does not do that. And I would like that clarified in the notes, showing that that's not a street that comes into my property.
You're exactly correct. Jeffrey Street comes off of 2427, but stops before it gets into the parking lot of where the old Jeffrey's was.
Right.
They're not looking at closing anything in their parking lot.
I agree, but the way this is drawn, it looks like there's a street coming into my property. So when I called the city manager, I wanted to make sure that we could do a right-of-way closure on my end too, but he said there's no right-of-way on that street going into their property the other way. You know what I mean? Because I knew there was no right-of-way on any of my deeds or the plat on that I have. So I just want to make sure that the owners agree that there will stop using my entrance onto Highway 52 right there as a right-of-way egress from the back end of Jeffrey. I don't have a problem closing the right-of-way on the other end. I just want to make sure that this is happening, because it's been very recent that they're still using the property. The three barriers, I went to look for them right before I came over here tonight. Again, I live in Concord. So they're gone. I can't find them. I don't know where the three barriers got to, but they were those three pillar barriers. They're moved. And they had to have been moved for those dump trucks to come through. So that's all I'm asking. That's not your job to do that.
Were those your barriers?
They were our, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know whose barriers they were, because they were there when my dad was there. And they were there before they bought the property. So I don't know whose barriers they were.
I thought the previous owner put those barriers up there and had a gate there too at one point.
There was. There's a cable line there, and those concrete barriers have been there for a long time. If you look at GIS, you can see them. I don't, but they've been moved in the past couple of months.
So just for better clarification, so, okay, there ought to be, and Christine, is there a mouse or something that she could take that and show us on this map where her property is? Because I think that.
You can see it. There's the line. That line is my, oh yeah, there you go.
I think I know, but I think there might be other council members as well that would like to see. So Tammy, if you come out to 2427.
I can't get on 2427 for my property. I would have to access through their property, so I don't do that. My entrance is onto Highway 52, right across from the dump.
From the L outer?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go. That's mine.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and there's a, it looks like there's an old road. I guess when whoever daddy bought it from, when they separated it all from Jeffries originally.
Four years ago.
It looks like there's an old road that they used to access, but there's no right-of-way now. And it's just a lot of dump trucks came with a lot of dirt when they were moving that site in the past couple of months.
Mr. Holbrook, anything you want to say about that? If you do, come up, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Members, I'm Kevin Holbrook. I'm here on behalf of the owner, AOC 2, and Admiral Oil. They own all the property here. I don't know anything about what she's talking about. We don't have anything to do with the dump trucks driving across. If they, if they were, I believe you, I just. Yeah, that is correct. The developer, the owner wants to abandon the street here and in the future create a new street with access off of 2427 into the site, which will be a betterment.
So there's no issue at all with what she wants to do that?
No.
She can block that road or whatever she wants to, because it's her property.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, have any questions for Ms. Earhart, Mr. Holbrook, or Ms. Alman? Does anyone else care to speak for or against? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Just so that folks watching know what we're doing here, did this come first before planning and zoning board?
No, this is not required to go planning. This goes straight to council.
And that's what I thought, but I wanted that to come out as well, particularly since Mr. Holbrook's on the planning and zoning board. I wanted, I wanted that to be cleared. Thank you very much.
You have an Ordinance 2542 in your agenda. If you're going to include the question that I brought up to Ms. Birch, please do that, and let's move forward. Either for or against.
Move to approve Ordinance 2542 with the street being taken away, but anything that would need to be done patch-wise, we would do as far as the run of the land, if I understand that correctly.
That we would not do.
On our easement.
On our.
Right, on our, yes, thank you.
Ms. Birch, is that clear?
I'm not totally clear. I thought the premise was that if there was any work that needed to be done, that we would be responsible for only patching and not paving.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, I said patch.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Dry. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, and then I would like.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
Is there anything that we need to have in this motion and this Approval of Ordinance 2542 that would take care of what the, what Ms. Earhart has brought before us?
Well, the right-of-way abandonment isn't affecting her property at all, so there's nothing in our jurisdiction tonight to address what is happening on her property. I mean, it's fine to state for the record, but that's not in council's authority for tonight.
Very good.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I have no announced or unannounced delegations other than for that topic. Your administrative departmental reports are in your agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. Appointment of the City of Albemarle delegate for the Rocky River RPO TCC Board. You know, there's two boards. This would be for the TCC Board. And the recommendation is to appoint our new Planning and Development Director, Alicia Stedman, to be the delegate, and Ross Holshey would continue to be the alternate.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Is Alicia here tonight?
She is not. Moving to new business, Council has Resolution 2526 for Public Housing Physical Year 2025 to 2029. It's a five-year agency plan. Public Housing Physical Year 2025 Annual Agency Plan. Public Housing Physical Year 2025 to 2029 Capital Fund Program Five-Year Plan. And Public Housing Physical Year 2025 Capital Fund Program Annual Statement. We are doing this again because HUD asked us to do a second public hearing, and that has been hailed, and no one showed up for the public hearing, but it was offered and the public hearing was hailed. No one showed up. So they're asking us to redo this, and we need to adopt this Resolution 2526.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion?
Is there anything in this thing that is significantly different than what it was before?
I will make sure there's no changes at all since the one we adopted, and I believe it was May. They just wanted us to have another public hearing.
And the notice, the public hearing actually is that a public hearing that takes place at public housing.
They've done it on Halloween, if I'm mistaken.
It was what?
That's correct.
On October 31st, if I'm mistaken.
Ooh, on Halloween Day. I mean, that's interesting.
Trick or treat.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, I passed around a resolution earlier for you to see. I'm asking you to adopt Resolution 2520, and it will be actually presented at a later date. If council's willing to adopt that night, we'll present it when that person can come back here to us for a.
May the president.
I'd like to move approval.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Rhodes, you have any updates?
I have a few. Special thanks, Smoke on the Mountain, a production at the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater, ended this past Sunday for matinee. There were six shows, past two weekends. They were very, very well attended. It was filmed by the URA Players. Happened to be able to attend with my wife. It's very entertaining, humorous production with talented singers and musicians. One of the musicians was our Mayor Pro Tim. Unity for Community Prayer and Praise Meeting was held on Wednesday, November 12th, at Saints Delight Church. It was designed and designated to pray for community leaders. Some of those community leaders from the city were there, were city officials, our police and fire. And we really want to thank Saints Delight Church for putting this praise meeting together. A few updates, Catalyst Grants, we have, they have closed, and we have over 10 applications that will be reviewed this week initially by the committee. This will encourage further downtown and business investment, and we look forward to reviewing those applications. We appreciate Lindsey Alman coordinating this effort. Finally, a reminder, ADDC or the Albemarle Downtown Development Corporation will hold its annual Holiday Tour of Homes event on Saturday, this Saturday, November 22nd, from 4:00 to 7:00. Tickets can be purchased at the Albemarle Downtown Development Corporation's website. That's www.albemarledowntown, all one word, dot com. And at the businesses listed on the website, tickets can also be purchased. Just a reminder, every ticket sold supports Albemarle Downtown's efforts toward beautification, revitalization, community events, and small business grants that keep Albemarle's downtown thriving and festive all year long. That's all I have.
Council, at your seat tonight, you have a list of the events going. Counsel, at your seat tonight, you have a list of the events going on in November and December, and they are quite a few. Thanks, Darren, for mentioning the tour of homes, and I encourage you to get out and go to that tour of homes. Anyone else have anything to come before counsel?
That list actually came before the special events committee today, and I asked Louisa Jane to make sure that it was before us, because it is, and one of the things that came out for special events is that every weekend between now and the thirteenth and fourteenth of December, there are things going on in downtown sponsored by folks within the downtown.
I will say that over the past two or three weeks, I've about worn myself out going to all of these events, incredible things going on in this town, and what kept going through my mind is, we have everything that a large city has in miniature.
We do indeed, and I appreciate Ms. Rhodes mentioning the URA Players this weekend or these past two weekends, and we've got a great, we've got great theater groups going on, and we need to take care of the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater. We need to take care of that particular venue, because it brings in a lot of people from a lot of different places. Also, coming from today, and I mentioned it to Mr. Rhodes a bit ago, coming from today's meeting was talking about the parade. The parade is on the thirteenth. We need to figure out who's, if we're gonna ride on something, and if we're gonna ride, we're gonna ride. If we're not gonna ride, then we can walk and throw out candy, but throwing out candy can't be, do what? Handing, that's right, it can't be throwing out, it has to be handing it out. So we need to figure out if it's gonna be something that we ride or if not ride, mainly because we only got one more meeting between now and the time that the parade comes up. And I don't want to take away from folks' thunder about the downtown Christmas on the night of the fifth, but thanks to the group, and to Kenny Kendall, and to Lisa, we're gonna do some more's downtown. That's gonna be the fun thing that's gonna draw folks downtown. They've done a lot of work, and the plaza's gonna be open, the walking through the plaza with lights, and so this is gonna be a great year for the downtown event, and all that was talked about, again, today at that special meeting, so that's it.
I have one other, one other thing. I've been saying this since I've been on council, I said it before I was on council, December the thirteenth is far too late for a Christmas parade, and I looked it up, and we used to have the Christmas parade the Monday after Thanksgiving. That would be a far better thing for downtown businesses, for the weather and everything else. Would be a far better time to have a parade. I know we can't change it this year, but keep that in mind.
We'll mention also, on the bottom of your list, it talks about the Art Place. We had a ribbon cutting last week at the Art Place, that's another art opportunity in town, and I would encourage you to go down and try them out, especially take your kids down there, because they get to do art, and someone else cleans up after your kids. That's a great thing. And that's located on Depot Street in the former RJ Tucker Building, and if you've not had a chance to go down and see the building, you need to go down and see what the owner has done with that building to enhance it, and I know he's got a couple of businesses coming now, with another one maybe down the road, but they've done a great job on that building.
And there's great food, Mediterranean food on the corner down there.
That's right.
That will be opening up, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. You're exactly right. That'll be on the West Main, just up from Depot.
The last thing I would offer, Mayor, is that Food Truck Friday twenty-six starts in April, and we were given today the packet for sponsorships for that. There are seven, rightly so, seven months, seven months worth of Food Truck Fridays, and opportunities are out there for folks to sponsor as little as, you know, five to seven hundred dollars, up to ten thousand dollars, so that's something that Parks and Rec is taking on in addition to what they usually do, so that we can have Food Truck Fridays. So if you've got anybody that we could send a packet to, let Lisa know. Thanks.
Counsel, at your desk tonight, Mr. Rhodes has provided you with some samples of some shirts. Those are just samples, and he will look to see what he can find locally to purchase those shirts after we find out what we will want, and that, we'll need to know what type of shirt you want and the sizes, and then we'll let you know what price is, because their intent is that the council members will pay these individually directly through the business.
Get it with an Alabama logo on it.
If that's what you want, I'm sure they can. Okay, anything else come before counsel?
Dex, what?
I apologize. Will you confirm COG, who's attending, so I can RSVP for that?
How many did you get?
I gave you a post-it up there.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Ms. Bramlett, you going to COG?
Yeah, I've responded.
You responded, Ms. Townsend, no? Like Bramlett, there's two, I'm going three, Ms. Hall four, Mr. Dry. So it looks like everybody but Hunt and Townsend will be able to make this one.
Our assistant city manager will be there, too.
And I'll remind counsel, this is actually at the Culp Lumber Meeting Building, not at Third Town Hall.
That's interesting.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, December first, at five PM, remember, five PM for a special work session here at City Hall. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.